All right, we'll call this meeting back to order. Lunch will be about 12:30, so if we can sort of plan to be about another hour here and then we'll break for lunch and then go from there. Okay? Everybody's okay with that? Everybody back? Anyway, Kevin, the floor is yours?
Okay, I'm on, speaking to page thirty-seven on the overview and it'd be Workers' Comp is on page forty-seven as the detail page. So, page forty-seven and forty-eight is Workers' Comp and Weekly Indemnity. The Workers' Comp and our Weekly Indemnity budgets are self-insured plans. The budget at WSAB premiums is the amount we charge to each department to fund the actual cost of WSIB claims. Lost wages where employees have not been able to return to work on a modified basis, medical costs, et cetera, including the administration fee that WSIB charges the county to manage claims. The budget increase to premiums is reflective of a slight increase to the rate charged to paramedic services. And reflective, and the increases, sorry, it's the rate charged paramedic service and the increase in assessable earnings, earnings subject to WSIB premium. All departments except long-term care charge significantly less than the rates they would be charged if the county was not self-insured and was a Schedule I WSIB. So, on the Workers' Comp budget there, we have increased the premiums. And as well, you know, seeing that previous years there, we had put funding away from reserves, so our reserves are inadequate level, so we've taken out the transferred reserve. And as I said, these premiums are a credit to this budget as they're charged out to the other departments to show their cost to those departments. And as well, we charge out to Ontario Works, childcare, paramedic service and that, et cetera, as well, because we get cost sharing from the province on those, so that's why we charge those across like that. So, so it's a zero budget here, but it is charged out to the various departments on that premium that's shown here as a credit in this budget, okay? The Weekly Indemnity budget is for the self-insured short-term disability plans for unionized staff in the three long-term care homes. A third-party disability management company not only adjudicates eligible for weekly indemnity benefits for full-time unionized workers, but also ensures the abstinence as of part-time employees medically supported. So, again, that is, it's a charge out to the long-term care facilities for that service, okay? Any questions on those two budgets? The Information Services budget, this department budget reflects the cost of keeping the county's network infrastructure up, running, along with the costs of licensing, providing virus protection, et cetera. It also provides training and funding to keep the county's information technology staff knowledgeable about current and with new network developments. This budget is funded by an interfunctional charge to each department and it's on page forty-nine. This here, again, is a zero-based budget, but I, this budget's actually increasing across the departments. As you'll see, the charge is going up about a hundred and forty, forty-six thousand dollars. This was, has been over the last two years when we went through a Microsoft audit and figured out what we should be licensing all our employees and stuff. This was two years ago. It was quite an increase, as well as we've put in a number of items of software and stuff to protect our network. And we, and with council's blessing, we phased those in over three years, so this is the final phase in, and this will be fully now being charged out to the departments as, and the way we charge that out is based on network users to each of the departments. So, that's how we create a network cost to each department of what those costs are. And again, we do that as for the cost sharing that we can get from the various partners that we deal with, okay? Any questions on the IS budget?
Counselor Sampson?
Sorry, just a general through you, Mr. Warden. You, did I hear you're funding that department through allocation of that cost to other departments? Is that principle followed in any of the other administrative departments, like HR or even taxation?
In our Min budget, you'll see an interfunctional charge. So, those departments that we can charge the cost of HR, IT, et cetera, based on employee counts, that we do an interfunctional charge to those departments to get funding from the province and cost sharing those. We do that, yes. The Assessment Budget is on page fifty. This is the fee that's charged by IMPACT to the County of Gray for the assessment services that they provide to all the municipalities, Gray County. And the letter they've advanced to me on our cost share of that is one million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so it's additional thirty thousand over the 2019 budget.
So, Kevin, on that, sometimes over the past few years, we've had them come and speak to that, have we not? I know that's something you wish to have, but I don't know.
Yeah, and this was discussed about the allocation of this cost last year. There was a report wrote on that and discussed here. With the reassessment values coming out, IMPACT is already starting to contact us about coming to councils. I'm sure those emails have been sent or letters sent to the local municipalities as well. So, they're, they're starting to ramp that up, that they'll be coming out to talk about trends and stuff, what they're seeing and stuff. And the timelines of when those assessment notices will be ending up in your residential ratepayers' mailboxes, so that's coming, so yes. So, we can, I know Anthony Fleming, the rep for us, has contacted me about coming to speak to the local treasurers and as well. I'm sure he'll be asking to come and speak to this assembly here. County property, I'm going to let Anne Marie Shaw, who is the director responsible for our administration and Morrison Buildings, to come and speak to that.
Good morning. So, the property budget includes the operating and capital expenditures for the county administration building, its outer buildings, and the Morrison Building, which is a property that we own and rent out. In the capital, or sorry, I guess overall, we're seeing a decrease in thirty thousand and thirty-one dollars compared to the 2019 budget. The main part of that decrease is in our, our operating budget, in which we had a decrease of thirty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-two, mainly due to our utility costs, seeing a decrease in that in our insurance for the buildings. Capital, we have an increase over the 2018 budget of a one thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars. And there is a list of the capital projects as we had previously presented to council as to what will be going on through the administration building and the Morrison Building. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions out there with regards to that? Well, seeing none, thanks, Anne Marie.
The next budget's the Provincial Offenses budget. That's the detailed page for that is on page fifty-one. The POA budget continues to provide a revenue source to the county and includes a net departmental operating requirement of three hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred. So, that's helping reduce your budgets by three hundred and seventy-three thousand, but that is lower than the four hundred and nineteen thousand that we had in, in, in 2019. There are a decrease of about forty-six thousand dollars. The county operates the POA courts for both Gray and Bruce Counties, and we cost share that on a population basis, basis. And revenues are, have been projected to be higher by approximately seventy-three thousand in 2020, excuse me. And as we spoke about earlier, that, the solicitor that was hired, fifty percent of that salary is, is new into this 2020 budget and for the POA operations, and that's cost shared, then again, as I said, with Bruce County. So, we have, when it comes to POA revenues, we're at the mercy of the authorities that are issuing the tickets. So, we're, we're looking at what we've seen in our, our revenues in the past, and that's how we project these revenues go forward. So, it's, I hope, we hope they, they end up where they are, but we keep it, staff run stats on them quarterly to try to project where we're headed every year. But it, you know, if there's police actions or things like that happen, we have seen volumes drop off significantly some years, so.
Sometimes we, as county counselors, contribute to that. But we try not to, but anyway, just a brief question, Kevin. A few years back, there was a discussion for a lot of years about going back so many years. And that sort of, we've got that recapture. I think it was going back three years of unpaid POA fines, and that was sort of tied to your driver's license or your plates or whatever. And I think that came, that came through, right?
Yeah, the province also made changes on some of the fines that when these individuals would show up to get their driver's license renewed or something, if there was outstanding POA fines, that they would not issue the driver's license as well. So, that, that's been helpful in our revenues as well, because a lot of times people would just not pay them. And, and so, it's not perfect, because there's, some of the individuals that we receive fines from, you're never going to get the fine from them, right? It's, it's a part of the population that's, that's in hardship and stuff that is difficult to get. But we do, we do our best on collections. We use agencies to try to help collect these as well and different items, like even Facebook friends trying to locate them and stuff. Has been successful in finding people where they live that we can send, get these collections made.
Can't hide. Counselor Lear, did you have a question, or were you just demonstrating your contribution to POA?
It's on page fifty, the details on page fifty-nine, taxation and grant. And this is where we, we budget our supplementary tax and our tax write-offs for the year. We've based this budget, pulled off all the, as calculated by IMPACT, they've given what they call an IMPACT's preliminary new assessment forecast report. It gives a three-year average on, on what they've seen in, in building permit values. And I've used that based against our tax rates, and that's how I've come up to this, increasing this budget by two hundred and seventy-eight thousand in revenues for 2020. And so, it's the best information I have here as the county to try to predict what might happen, what, what might new come on in twenty, in 2020. So, that's helping the budget here, right, reducing the budget by two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Included in here is a fifty thousand dollar budgeted expenditure for grants. This is for grant-in-lie development charges for those nonprofit housing organizations that come forward if, if council sort of wishes to, to provide a grant to pay their development charges. That would be up to council that time, and that's funded from reserves in here, and that's continued in here. I know Randy and I are working on updating some, maybe an exemption for the nonprofit housing and stuff, which has been discussed by council to try to help affordable builds and stuff. And, and that, we're still waiting on information from the government and, but that's, that's coming. I know Randy's got a report drafted on it, so we can be doing some changes to our development charges collections.
Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Kevin, in speaking to that fifty thousand being granted in lieu of development charges, basically, will there be, I mean, that has to be made up with taxes ultimately. Will there be a corresponding deposit back into reserves from the tax levy to make up that fifty grand?
Kevin?
And I'd say yes. When we mentioned earlier about our, our investment income when it exceeds one percent, we put it in the one-time funding reserve, and that's for things like this that council wants to fund, okay?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. On the same topic, when we do provide a grant for affordable housing on development charges, do we know whether that is matched at all by the local municipality where this project is happening?
Kevin?
I guess to answer that, every municipality could be different. Some have exempted actually nonprofit housings right in their background development charges. After that, I have not contacted it to see if they're doing that as well. It's just here at the upper tier that, okay.
Is that something, when you open up the DC charge, that you want to have that conversation here too?
I would just like to say, the reason we do that is development charges are being collected and were calculated to be collected. To keep the development charge reserve fund whole, and that money is there, that's what this grant-in-lie does. That money is going then into, to fund development charges. So, if, if we didn't ask the nonprofit to pay it and just exempt it, then you'd be shorting the development charges reserves by fifty thousand. So, as a grant-in-lie, that's where we're keeping that whole, okay?
Counselor Desai?
Thank you, but to make a fair argument on that, if we do exempt the, the nonprofit housing from our development charges, wouldn't that just simply mean that other types of developments would be paying more in order to make up that fifty thousand in the development charge shortfall?
Kevin?
Forgetting the process. Go forward, you're right. Like if, on an update on the development charge and exclude that, how many, how much that is in those builds? Yes, you're right. It would, it could cause your development charges to increase for the others that are paying on the development charge side, right?
Certainly with our task force on housing, we may have some conversations there too. Kevin?
Next budget's the Grabir's Health Units on page sixty. Just a small decrease here of fifteen thousand dollars, and that was just based on my calculation was done last year. And, and it's, it's nothing on the population count and, and what I was anticipating that the health unit budget might be. So, that's what the health unit has done for 2020, and we've spoke, spoke to staff there that, the province has advised that they're going to amalgamate these health units. And the county's going to be formed, is to be comprised of Grabir, Sheeran and Perth Counties, and it's supposed to have an autonomous board. As part of that announcement as well, they announced that the province was moving to, from their current seventy-five, twenty-five cost share, that they're going to a seventy-thirty. And that would result about a million-dollar loss to the Grabir's Health Unit. So, and Gray's share of that then would be on the cost sharing of about six hundred thousand dollars. So, province has ensured that in 2020, that no public health unit will experience a, a, an increase of more than ten percent. So, they've given the mitigation funding and that, and then the health unit staff have indicated that their, the surplus they are anticipating for the 2019 year, for the Gray and Bruce would, would receive, would make up the shortfall then of that ten percent. So, that's why this budget is really, in essence, a zero-based budget for twenty, 2020. Now, it has, where it will end up in 2021 is still to see where this all comes out. But I know they're working hard and have made staff changes and stuff to, to reduce their, their budget, so. And I, there is, I'm, people here that sit on, on the health board, if they want to speak more to that, but that's really the summary of this budget that, that we've met with the staff there, and they've asked us how to proceed with.
I don't know, Sue, do you have anything to add, or everything's said it all? Thanks, Kevin. Counselor Sampson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Warden, this is going back to the war, to the, the sup, discussion we had, the supplementary assessment. I noticed your write-offs projected for 2020 will be six fifty-two, but actuals on a much higher supplementary increase of one point six million was just a shade under five hundred thousand. So, I'm just wondering how you're projecting a much higher write-off or much significantly lower supplementary increase?
So, Counselor Sampson, do you have a page number there or something you're looking at so we can fault?
Yes, what I've, what I've done here is, working with our tax consultant, to tax write-offs, we can have appeals that go back six, seven, eight years that do not get addressed. And then they come all through in one year, and, and I, we've had that case happen here. So, what we've done is, I, with the tax consultant, we've gone through province-wide and regional appeals, and we've looked at all those appeals. And they said, this is what, what their success rate is, the percent of write-offs that they're getting. And those, that's what we're using then, based on what we still have outstanding, plus the history of actually what we, what we're seeing in write-offs, vacancy rebates, et cetera. So, that's how that was estimated, based on those, but based on those projections, so.
Counselor Sampson?
Would it then be through you, would it be then helpful for you to share that data with the lower-tier municipalities since we're going to see the impact of that, of those write-offs as well? I don't think frankly, at our level, we're estimating those quite high relative numbers, so that would be helpful to have that data.
You'll find those appeals are more into the industrial than large, large commercial stuff. So, you'll see urban centers like Hanover, Owensand, will see more of this stuff than other municipalities do. So, that's, you have plants like Monroshark, you know, here, they'll, they'll appeal that. We'll have Home Depot that do an appeal province-wide that ends up at the local level. So, we see more of this happening in, in, in the urban, bigger urban centers that way, but that's, yeah. And just to try to, because of the change in the ARB on, on the assessments and stuff, we're seeing these go so long without being resolved. I, I don't want, see council seeing a big hit here, so we're trying to accrue and be prepared for these when they come through, so, okay?
And probably you see some, when you get a new assessment, four years, you get some adjustments probably at the first. And then in the past, we've seen, was it gravel pits and golf courses get readjusted? That's probably a good question when IMPACT comes to ask them, you know, what's, what's the expected timeframe of settling these things up? So, that's a good question in that sense.
And I have to say, a lot of these tax agents work for these companies, and they get a percentage on, so they're in no hurry for these to be resolved. I hate to admit that, because the longer it goes on, and, and if there is a settlement and they get, you know, a reduction of twenty percent or some, they could get eight years' worth then. So, you know, it's, it's difficult, so.
Just back to Counselor Millen about consultants. He's not paying attention. Anyway, go ahead, Kevin.
Health Care Initiatives Funding, which is on page sixty-two. This is, the 2020 budget contains two hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred as a transfer reserve for healthcare initiatives funding. This level of funding is based on the council's approved recommendation of that half of one percent of the county levy maximum per year be, be a contribution to capital construction of projects of hospitals. So, so the transfer of the healthcare reserve in the amount of that two hundred and sixty budget for 2020. The county in advance of the 2019 budget received delegations from the Collingwood General and Marine Hospital seeking a three-million-dollar pledge payable over ten years, and from the Grabir's Health Services seeking a gift of four hundred thousand over two years for the MRI campaign. Based on that, council tonight appointed a Healthcare Funding Roles and Responsibility Task Force to create a health- Roles and Responsibility Task Force to create a healthcare funding policy that will guide Gray County's council's decision-making regarding funding requests from healthcare stakeholders. The objective is to create a healthcare funding policy that will provide information regarding healthcare, Gray County healthcare funding, and outline rationale for municipal funding should be allocated in the criteria for eligibility, and provide maximum annual reserve contributions. So that is underway. I believe we've had three meetings now. So we had representatives from the Gray Bruce Health, Regional Health Center there on the past meeting. So there's been some good dialogue that's going on in that, so it's underway. So for now, this funding is just budgeted to go to reserve, so there's been no decisions made on those, on those requests at this time.
And I think there's a meeting February, March, April, and then I think you're going to have a report come back after that.
And the last, last budget I'm speaking to is the Georgian College Marine Emergency Duty Training Center, and that's a $200,000 budget item. That's was a commitment we made of $2 million over 10 years for, to build that over there at the, at Georgian College. So we're, that will be, 2020 will be the sixth year of that commitment, I believe. So, yeah, six installments.
And I just want to add, I was at the Marine Club Ball there a few weeks back, and it's something to be proud of in in the province, in the sense that what Georgian College is doing with their, and and just us stepping up to the plate for that, for that recertification and and training at that event, it was at the Royal York just before the Roma Conference, and the number of people that were receiving their diploma from this course here that's offered here in Owensound, and also they did a great slideshow with regards to the Coast Guard across Canada and all the recertification. It's something that we are, should be proud of, and maybe, maybe at some time Georgian College can sort of re, have a, have a delegation here sometime to sort of show what that money has done. I know that some of us were on county council a few years back when that was committed to, and showing what they're doing there, and it's it's quite impressive, and it really something that we should be proud of. So maybe down the road, we can have them here to talk about that. Kevin?
That is all the budgets under the corporate and corporate administration side. So again, just to summarize the requests there and the changes that have been made, we're looking for about 207,000 or just 2.08% increase in the, in the levy for the, for those budgets under that portfolio.
Any further questions under the corporate side? Okay, Kevin, you got another half an hour. You keep going.
So I'll introduce this section, and then I'll turn it over to to the directors that report to these budgets here. So so the planning in the 2020 budget for the planning community and development function includes a net requirement total of operating capital of just 4.7 million compared to about 4.6 million in 2019, an increase of about 75,000. And the first budget's under that is the planning budget, and that's found on page 70. They're detailed on that, and I'll ask Randy to come up and speak to these budgets.
Welcome, Randy.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, everyone. So the planning budget, budget summary pages can be found on pages 64 to 66 in the, in the detailed package. As Kevin noted, the planning operating capital pages, the detailed pages are on pages 71 to 78 of your package. So the planning operating budget provides funding for the planning function of the department, whether it be reviewing and processing development applications submitted to the county, reviewing and commenting on local applications such as consents, zoning amendments, minor variances, site plans, NEC applications, as well as conducting special studies and projects. The planning budget also includes the coordination of civic addressing and payment to the Owensound Police Services for the operation of our 911 dispatch for the entire county. With respect to the planning operating budget, the one main change with this budget is the proposal to convert the contract planner position that has been in place since 2018 to a permanent position. This planner position is required to meet the demands of development applications, which continues to increase, as well as to assist with key strategic projects such as the Climate Change Action Plan, the Age-Friendly Community Strategic Action Plan, as well as a subdivision database project, just to name a few projects that are underway. This position was previously funded from reserves and is proposed to be funded from the levy. To help reduce the impact on the levy, we have removed the student planner position in this year's budget, which normally costs around $12,000, and therefore technically we're adding an equivalent of 0.47 of an FTE in this year's budget. Some other important initiatives in 2020 will be continuing to work with municipalities to implement the Community Improvement Plan Program, as well as implementing the Planning Application Tracking System, which has been developed by our IT department. With respect to the planning capital budget, this can be found on pages 74 to 78 of your detailed budget. We're proposing a capital net requirement of $17,900. Just go through and highlight some of the proposals here. First one is the proposing 75,000 to conduct an age-friendly community strategic action plan. This would help to ensure that the decisions and actions reflect and respond to the needs of youth and older adults in our communities. This project is to be funded from reserves, and therefore will have no impact to the levy. And this project aligns with the Recolor Gray official plan policies that were approved by council in 2019, which supports creating age-friendly communities, and will also build on the work done by the University of Guelph master students who created an age-friendly planning document a couple of years ago. The key focus will be creating on targeted actions to help create age-friendly environments. We've also included $25,000 to fund any updates required to the county's development charges bylaws. Kevin mentioned this earlier in his presentation, and and to also determine how best to proceed with a new community benefit charge once the regulations have been released by the province. This project is to be funded from the development charges reserve, and therefore has no impact to the levy. Funds are being carried over from 2019 to continue the work on the Climate Change Action Plan that's currently underway. This action plan will help identify actions to help reduce our overall greenhouse gas emissions, as well as actions to help mitigate against and be more resilient to the effects of climate change. Some other items in the capital budget are setting aside funds to help pay for future studies or equipment, such as a growth management study, development charge review, replacement of the plotter scanner, as well as a future official plan update, which actually won't occur for another few years. But we're just setting aside those funds so that we're not having any huge hit in any given year. So that's the planning, operating, and capital budget highlights. Don't know if there's any questions before I move on to the agriculture budget.
Okay, Counsel Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm just wondering whether there's been through you any opportunity to review the ability to transfer some relief from the levy to fees for this particular service, since it could be deemed that this is a little bit service-related, this, this particular department's business activity. And have you done any work to see whether or not there's an ability to do that? What percentage of your, your budget is covered by fee? Is that consistent with other municipalities, either lower tier or upper tier?
Sort of the ratio, okay. Randy?
Great questions. One of the projects actually identified in 2020 is to look at updating our fees and services, charges for planning applications. With, with, with respect to this particular position, however, this, this position primarily reviews local planning applications. We don't collect any fees and charges from local municipalities to review those applications. However, we are mandated by the province through municipal plan review in order to review those applications from a consistency with provincial policy statement and conformity with our official plan. Just to give you an idea in terms of numbers, just in 2018, we reviewed just close to 500 local applications. So these would be consents, minor variances, zoning bylaw amendments, NEC applications, and site plans. So this gives you an idea in terms of the, the volume that we, we have to deal with in terms of reviewing those local applications, not to mention the, the ones that the counties do the approval authority for. So we will be reviewing those in further detail later this year in terms of the fees and services to see if our, our fees are in line with comparators, as well as in line with the services that we offer.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through to Randy, great start to the presentation. Excellent. I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing with, for the capital initiatives, specifically the Age-Friendly Community Strategy Plan. But with regard to the, the Climate Change Action Plan, what, what is the amount of funding that's being carried over to 2020?
Randy?
Sorry. So the amount of funding being carried over is $36,000. Total project budget is 50,000. That's to cover the cost to, for the consultant that we've engaged, Iclay Canada. Iclay Canada comes with great experience in, in climate change action plans. In fact, they've developed a framework for municipalities across Canada through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to set the framework for municipalities to develop these climate action plans. So we're really excited to have them on board with helping us with this process. We're still early stages of the project. They've been collecting a lot of data and background information, so that's what the expenses were in 2019. The next big steps will be, of course, the consultation process, which will be, which will take place throughout 2020. We're really excited to work with local municipalities and other stakeholders throughout this process to come up with a, a realistic action plan that we can all utilize in order to hopefully make a difference locally when it comes to the impacts of climate change. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Screen went blank. Hopefully I don't have to log in, because I don't know the password. I do have to log in.
So when that's getting fired back up, Counsel Desai and then Counsel Miller. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question is with regards to the elimination of the student planner's job. Is, is it, are we doing that simply for austerity measures, or are we doing that because we expect that the contract planner's additional hours, since they're becoming full-time, will absorb the workload of the student planner? And I ask that, Mr. Warden, because we need to remember that we're, we're moving into, into times where work-life balance is becoming very important. So I don't want to, for the sake of austerity, get to a point where people are burning out, simply to save the odd penny.
I hear what you're saying. Randy?
That's a fair question. And it's a bit of both, in terms of, obviously, we wanted to look at helping to transition in terms of going from a contract to permanent position to reduce the impact on the levy. So that was one thing. And then, no doubt, having a full-time planner throughout a 12-month period versus having a student planner with a four-month period has been a tremendous help for us from a resource perspective, has helped us to move forward with a number of projects and initiatives, and hopefully be able to keep our overtime at sustainable levels. There's no doubt, there's a, there's still some overtime, especially with some, some staff, and especially if you spoke to my wife, and I'm sure she said that, that we should probably keep that student planner position in. But I think overall, I think it's helped to keep them fairly sustainable levels.
Certainly with a student planner. Also, it gives that opportunity for young people to get an opportunity to get exposure. Counsel Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Interesting notion of a planner being overworked. Anyway, that said.
Boo.
Thank you. Your, your review of the services that are provided to the lower tiers, would it include backing out of the job of minor variances, for instance, as an example? In my mind, I don't think the county needs to be dealing with minor variances at the local level, among other things that maybe the county, because, I mean, we all have planners on duty. It just, it's almost like a conservation authority thing. We've got three, lower tier, upper tier, and the conservation authority, all commenting on the same stuff. I'm not sure that level of repetition is needed. So I'd appreciate your comments on, on that thing, thinking.
Randy?
Another great question. With respect to that, we want to look at not just local, like a review of local applications, but the whole operations in terms of service review. And, and the reason for that is partly as well as, I don't know if you remember, the Planning Act changed some timelines in terms of trying to reduce the amount of timelines in order to move forward with things like subdivisions, approvals, et cetera. So we're, we want to look at that with a wider lens, I guess, not just on a minor variance level. So that's something that we definitely will want to explore further with local municipal, local municipal partners. In terms of minor variance, for example, we still have to, under municipal plan review, check for consistency and conformity with OP, but we may be able to not provide as detailed comments as we do today, for example. So there's things like that that we can look at to help reallocate resources from that area in order to be able to, again, get back to that, like, life-work balance, as well as to also provide more opportunities for us to look on strategic projects in, in other areas.
I'm not trying to give you more work.
Yeah, no, I think it's something that we have on our radar anyways, in order to look at reviewing as part of the projects this year.
Thanks for that question, Counsel Miller, and you get A+ for humor. Counsel Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. That, I thought I had the floor. My, my question, Mr. Warden, through you to the director of planning services, is would it then, as you mentioned, the timelines are changing and they're getting a little narrower, would it be more prudent to, for at least this year, keep the, the student position on the, on the budget and use the student position for this year? And once we have a better idea of exactly where the, the timelines end up, because we have provided comments to the provincial government on our position, on what those time, on our, on our position and our opinion on those timelines. So would it be more prudent to have the student position on, on, on the budget for at least this year?
There's a question for you, Randy.
I guess I'd be looking at the direction of council in terms of if that's, if that's the wish. We feel confident that based on our current work plan and the projects that we have in 2020, that we'll be able to move forward with those projects. It's always difficult to anticipate what applications we are going to receive in, in 2020. We have a good sense based on pre-submission consultations and things of that nature that we keep track of. So it's, I think we could still operate based on what I'm proposing in the current budget. However, there are always great benefits and opportunities, as, as even the warden mentioned, you know, the opportunity to also provide that experience. We, we have actually an example where we had a student planner who's now one of our full-time planners. That helps with what Kim was talking about earlier in terms of succession planning and other things. So I'm, I'm more than happy to include that into the budget if that's the wish of council. No doubt, it helps us with other projects, but at this stage, I'm comfortable with being able to operate based on our proposed work plan, based on what we're putting forward in this year's budget.
Let's add that to the little list that's being tallied up, and we can come back to that. If that's okay with everyone? Okay, so Randy, carry on. Any more, here, any more questions up to know? Okay, carry on.
Thank you. Just moving on to the agricultural budget, this starts at page 79 in your detailed budget package. This includes a net departmental operating requirement of $150,900, or an increase of just under $10,000. The agricultural budget includes costs associated with enforcing the county's forest management bylaw, which is contracted to the Gray-Salvo Conservation Authority. The agricultural budget also includes grant payments for the harvesting of nuisance beavers and coyotes. It also includes contributions to agricultural organizations such as Gray Egg Services and the Forage Club. Just to focus on Gray, Gray Egg Services for a little bit. Just to focus on Gray Egg Services for a little bit, it provides excellent services to farmers across Gray County. I've had many conversations with farmers over the years, and they're very thankful to have Gray Egg Services assisting them. In addition to organizing the very popular Grabers Farmers Week, which if you haven't had an opportunity to attend, I encourage you to do so, it's a conference that brings together excellent speakers on a variety of topics. Gray Egg Services also provides a number of services to farmers, including providing agricultural information, referral services, and educational events. We have partnered with Gray Egg Services on a number of events and projects over the years, and their knowledge and connections with the egg sector is very beneficial. So for that, the 2020 budget includes carrying over funding of $5,000 for computer software and hardware acquisitions for Gray Egg Services. The offices of the Egg Services actually reside in the Gray Gables facility, and we actually provide that space to Gray Egg Services for their operation. Their computers are connected to the county's network, and it's important to ensure that their computers and software are kept up to date and are compatible with our network. Another key initiative we'll be moving forward with the Regional Agricultural Learning and Demonstration Site adjacent to Gray Roots, which this council will recall, we had a recent report just at the end of 2018 about where we're at with that project. That's the site adjacent to Gray Roots. It's a partnership between the county and the Own Sound and Chatsworth Agricultural Societies, and of course, Maryland Everett Hall are donating the land in order to make that project a reality. So that's another key initiative in the agricultural portfolio that we'll be moving forward with. That's primarily it on the agricultural budget. Happy to take any questions on that one.
Okay, we've gone into the dark zone here, so why Kevin finds that out. Are there any questions on regards to agricultural? See, that's that same spot we should be going to, eh? And that's what we should have in our budget meeting, eh? That picture of that, what's everybody think of that one? Any questions here? Okay. Seeing that, I know, was it last year or the year before, we increased the funding to the Egg Services in Markdale there, and I think that was sort of maybe brought by, maybe Counselor Millen or whatever, but I know that was greatly appreciated.
Just further to that, what we're, because we were playing catch-up last year for a number of years, because this level of council member was kept at $25,000 per year for at least 14 years, I think it was, what we're doing now going forward is building in a cost of living increase essentially, so that we're, again, not hit in any one given year with a larger increase. So you'll see that in this year's budget. With respect to the forestry budget, the forestry budget includes a net departmental requirement of $41,900, which is a decrease of $21,500 from the 2019 budget. Forest revenue for 2020 was previously estimated at just over $76,000, but based on recent tender results, the actual amounts came in at $109,000, which is an increase in revenue of just over $20,700 compared to 2019. I should maybe got the math wrong there. It's a little more than that. The 2020 budget contains funding for maintenance work, signage, and trail improvements within the county forests. Some of these funds are carried over from the 2019 budget to tackle priority projects and recommendations that were recently approved by council as part of the recreational trails master plan. Other key initiatives will be finalizing the update to the forest management plan and updating the forest management bylaw, both of which are projects that are currently underway. So that's primarily it for the forest budget, and happy to take any questions.
Any questions up to now? Nope, seeing none, go ahead. Carry on, Randy.
And the last one is the trails budget. It provides funding for the management of the CP Rail Trail. It's on detailed pages 83 to 89 in your package. The proposed trail budget, both operating capital proposes a total net requirement of $140,700 compared to just under $144,000 in 2019, which represents a decrease of For 2020, the trails' capital budget provides funding for the replacement of Culvert Bridge 80, which is currently estimated to be $243,000. This would be funded from the Trails Reserve. Transportation Services is working on a more cost-effective design for this Culvert Bridge 80, which staff hope will reduce the overall budget, and they've already found some savings, as the original project was going to cost over $300,000 initially. We've been working with them. We did some geotech work and some design work in 2019, and in 2020 will be actual replacement is what's proposed. Two other culverts are proposed to be repaired or replaced on the trail. One is Culvert 5A, which is a carryover from 2019, as the repair work to that culvert wasn't able to be completed. The other culvert proposed to be replaced is Culvert 15A at an estimated cost of $41,000. Again, both of those will be funded from the Trails Reserve. The rehabilitation or replacement of culverts and bridges is based on our CP Rail Trail is based on our 2016 Bridge and Culvert Assessment Report, as well as information and assistance that's provided through our Transportation Services staff. A total of $6,000 has also been included to complete an assessment of the culverts bridges that have a greater than three-meter span on the CP Rail Trail, and this is in order to provide the information that's required as part of our asset management planning. These projects are all funded from the Trails Reserve, and what we do is we put in a transfer to reserves every year to keep the levy requirement consistent rather than fluctuating on a year-to-year basis. So as you can imagine, if we didn't do that consistent level of transfer to reserve, we would have a significant impact this year based on Culvert and Bridge 80, which I mentioned is going to be at $243,000. What we propose to transfer in the reserve this year is $76,500, which is an increase of $1,500 compared to 2019. So again, we're trying to keep those levels consistent in order to avoid any fluctuations. Overall, between the planning, civic addressing, agriculture, forestry, and trail budgets, staff are proposing a net levy increase of just over $58,000. That's all I have with respect to those budgets.
Okay, thanks, Randy. I got a question for Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I somewhat reluctantly, cautiously ask, do any of these bridges or culverts have any historical value?
There's a question. Randy?
No, none of the structures that we're replacing in 2020 have historical value or significance. The one is, the Culvert Bridge 80, it's a significant structure in terms of the size of it, but it's not historically significant.
We just hope that when we spend a lot of money on it, we can carry a train someday, right? Counselor Sampson?
Thank you very much, Warden. This perhaps could lead to a general question, but in the trails category, for last year you had the two $10,000 items for fences and signage, which was included in the 2019 levy. It's now included in the 2020 levy. So what happened to the allocation of the 2019 taxes as it relates to that project? And are you not double counting if you included again in the 2020 levy? I'm assuming that taxes were paid to recover that $20,000 in this particular case of those items. They were collected. Where's that money?
So Randy, while you look there, are there any other questions to formulate while Randy's looking there? So I know you're good?
If I'm looking at the right page, page 83, is that right, Counselor? So yeah, there is a fencing line item and what of $10,000 in there? We do have a transfer from reserve of $21,000, so that $10,000 is to be funded from reserve, as well as some other, including the signs, budgets. I'd have to look at the exact breakdown in further detail. I can get back to Counselor Sampson on that question for sure. Kevin may have some more.
I'll go back to Kevin first before I go back to Mr. Sampson. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, there'll be an upcoming report, which we identify projects that we collected tax for that are being carried forward, asking council's permission to transfer to reserve, and they're being budgeted from reserve in these budgets for now, so we're not retaxing again.
Counselor Sampson?
So through you, Warden, just as a general statement then, to the extent something was budgeted in 2019, I'm trying to follow the budget versus actuals. Budget versus budget is an interesting discussion, but budget versus actuals, I think, is the helpful discussion. What did you spend last year? What are you spending to spend this year, expect to spend this year? In most of the categories we've seen so far, there's a significant difference between actual spending in 2019 and budgeted 2020. And I would like to know where that difference, why that difference is there, especially as it relates to whether or not that actual 2019 versus budget 2019, and where that number rests. Because I can't find it anywhere, and I can't find any reference to where that difference is sitting. Is it sitting in reserve funds? If so, then it shouldn't be added to a levy component, and I'm glad to hear you're doing a reserve to do that for 2020, because in that case you'd be double counting. So I think the general question needs to be actuals versus 2019. If there's a difference, where's that gone? Has it gone into a reserve? And then follow to make sure that that reserve in 2020 is being drawn from to fund it for 2020, if it's still on 2020 project.
Okay. Kevin, do you have anything to add to that?
That is, the report we'll bring to council to ask to carry those forward, and they're being funded from reserves. So we have no authority as staff to show that being sent to reserve without council's authority, because we didn't budget it to go to reserve, we budgeted to spend it. We didn't spend it, so now we're asking to carry it forward into reserve, showing and funding these projects from reserves, so that we're not asking to tax for them again.
Madam CEO?
And just to be clear, this has been our practice, bringing that report back every year is what we've always done. Maybe there could be, Counselor Sampson, we could show him examples of past ones, and you could see if there's anything, before we bring this next one forward, if there's something about the format or the information that you would have a suggestion about, we would welcome that, okay?
Certainly, the summary of what was not spent is sort of part of that, right? So we look forward to that report coming. At this time? So I think that's part, that's into your part, right, Randy? So I'm going to suggest we take lunch, and then we'll go into economic development after lunch, if that's okay with everyone? I think everybody's stomachs are probably growling away. So we'll take a break, and we'll come back when we're done our lunch. Thank you.